It is six o'clock, so we will go ahead and call the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, regular board meeting to order. I'd like to start by wishing everyone a happy new year and welcoming the new commissioners. We do have people who attend via Zoom, so we ask that when you do speak, that you speak into the microphone so that people out in Zoom land can hear you as well, please. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. And then if you will stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Helserman.
President.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
We do have a quorum. We do not have any correspondence this evening, so we will move to the first call to the public. As you came in through the doorway, there were cards. And if you're in the boardroom and would like to speak, we ask that you fill out a card and hand it in. And our first person this evening at the call to the public will be Randy Clausen. And it is a three-minute call to the public.
I'm, as you said, Randy Clausen, and I am a constituent of Jay Drick. And I live in Howell, Michigan. I just wanted to be here the first night the new people came so that we could meet them. And I want you to know that we are all in this together. And it is my heartfelt hope that we'll make Livingston County a better place to be for all people. There are many people in Livingston County who are above the median. They're doing very well, but our county, sad as it is, such a wealthy county, still has 24% of the households below that level. They call it the Alice level, below the level of being able to make ends meet. And those people are not just a statistic 24, but they're people, people. Now, I know that when I suffered poverty or not able to make ends meet, I was really glad for the people who came alongside of me and helped with the kinds of services that the government has the ability to provide. And one of the things that I'm really passionate about is that these 24% of the households would have some public transportation available to them so that they can get to and from work and so that they can use some of their money. Instead of trying to keep an old car running, they can use the public transportation and use some of that money for their family's needs. So you'll hear me often say that we need a better bus system for the people in Livingston County. And knowing that, I see a lot of gray hair on the commissioners. And we're all getting older. And there's expected a huge increase in the people over 65. And with that comes needs for public transportation because most people cannot afford to have a car that will take them in their wheelchair here and there. So it becomes even more important, as we all age, to have that kind of public transportation available. So as we work together to make this a better place, I hope that you will give serious thought to the transportation issues that will come before you this year. And I wish you all a happy new year.
Next, we have Stacy Farrell from Osceola Township.
I'm here to talk tonight about leadership and the mission of this organization. Among the words contained within our county's mission statement are effective, efficient, and improve the quality of life for all who work, live, and play in Livingston County. This should be at the forefront of every action and decision by this board, and these should unequivocally be values that are exemplified by the chairperson as well as characteristics such as integrity, teamwork, honesty, and the desire to maintain a healthy work culture. What I have witnessed in the last year is a departure from these values that are foundational to our community. Not only has there been attempts to subvert the systems in place to affect the appointments of myself and others, information has been misrepresented in an effort to manipulate others. This mishandling of information is evidenced through presentations on social vulnerability, COVID funding, health department issues, schools, and more. And they fail to provide information in a complete and responsible manner that allows fellow members to make an informed decision. That in itself should be a warning for all of you to do your own work. This micromanagement shows a disrespect to the county employees whose job it is to execute these systems under the guidance of the board and not for any member to force their individual will upon departments. Don't get me wrong, I'm a huge proponent of leadership, challenging the status quo in order to bring about positive change. But what I have seen is that this behavior has created an adversarial environment that attempts to pit county employees against the public in a sort of McCarthyism that breeds dissension, distrust, and acrimony. And that is not leadership. Healthy leadership respects the views of all constituents, liberal and conservative alike, knowing that their job is representation of everyone in their district, not just those that hold a certain viewpoint. A true leader abstains from the dramatics to focus on the overall success of the organization. This includes allowing the systems to work as they were designed and trusting the employees and the people actually doing the work while appropriately using authority in a curious but nonjudgmental way so that employees feel coached and supported in their careers and constituents feel represented and that their tax dollars are being used appropriately. To me, it also means having the difficult discussions with those that you disagree with in order to listen, learn, and expand your worldview rather than making mass generalizations about your neighbors and colleagues. This delicate balance isn't a skill that folks are born with, but a result of the intentional deliberate effort on behalf of the leader to develop the grace and understanding that leads all stakeholders wanting a seat at the table to collaborate in the progress of our county for the benefit of all. It's for that reason and others I have mentioned that I'm asking this board to usher in new leadership, one that honors the mission of the county as well as the residents. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Murphy from Cohocta Township.
Thank you and welcome, new members. Nice to see you on that side of the table. I just want to address two things. I'd like to address the inflationary payment that was voted on last time as well as the stipend for the clerk. I realize that this is a new board with some new members, but I don't think there was anything that was done maliciously or wrong with the previous board. And I would trust that if this comes up for a vote again tonight, you would reaffirm what was passed by the previous board. However, if you decide that you don't want to or you have some additional thoughts, let me just plant a few seeds. Number one, in the interest of full disclosure, Betsy and I are friends outside of our professional relationship. But more importantly, she runs a great office. We were not on the front page for any election debacle that happened. That's a testament to her leadership. She has done an extra, her and her office has done an extraordinarily good job of assisting and training the local clerks and making sure that their elections weren't a debacle. You probably don't remember this, but in 2017, when she went from appointed to officially elected, she actually took a pay cut at that time. You also heard from a number of clerks that came in and gave testimony, for lack of better words, on her behalf of the increased workload that this is going to create on not just her office, but all the clerks' offices in the county. And this was something that just didn't happen organically. This was not just growth in the normal growth of business. This was due to a constitutional amendment that was passed by the people. There was no, just, okay, the workload has increased organically because, right? So has mine, so has everybody else's on the board. As a result of that change, again, it's a significant workload. Another thing that I want you to think about, in addition to the fact that she took a pay cut in 2017, if the stipend is not upheld, her deputy will actually make more money than she does. To me, when your right-hand man, right-hand woman makes more than you do, that's just a little bit wrong. Maybe in the private sector, the head dude's got some stock options and all that stuff. That's not the case here. So I just, again, I would support what the previous board did and would ask that you reaffirm that if it's even brought back tonight. And regarding to the inflationary assistance, about 15 years ago, I was on a board where we gave the employees a raise. And due to a perfect storm, nobody's fault, we ended up about mid-year having to rescind that raise. That is still talked about today. That is still talked about today. That will leave a scar that will outlive all of your time on this board and maybe even in this county. So again, if that comes up for consideration, I would hope you would reaffirm the previous vote. Thank you.
I don't have any more cards, so we will move to Zoom. And Sherry LaRue, if you could please provide your name and your location, please.
Hi, is my microphone working?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Sherry LaRue, Green Oaks Township. Welcome to the new folks on the board. Today, I want to share with you simply Psalm 2. Why do the heathen rage and the people imagine a vain thing? The king of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointing, saying, "Let us break their bands asunder and pass away their cords from us." He that sits in the heavens shall laugh; the Lord shall have them in derision. Then shall he speak unto them in his wrath and vex them in his sore displeasure. Yet have I set my king upon the holy hill of Zion. I will declare the decree the Lord hath set unto me. Thou art my son; this day I have begotten thee. Ask of me, and I shall give thee the heathen for thine inheritance and the uttermost parts of the earth for thy possession. Thou shalt break them with a rod of iron; thou shalt dash them in the pieces like a potter's vessel. Be wise now, therefore, O ye kings, the instructed, the judges of the earth. Serve the Lord with fear and rejoice with trembling. Kiss the sun lest he be angry and ye perish from the way, when his wrath is kindled but a little. Blessed are all they that put their trust in him. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Brenda Plank, if you would please introduce yourself and give your location, please.
Thank you. Good evening.
Brenda, it's very difficult to hear you. We're having a hard time hearing you.
Can you hear me now okay?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So I'm Brenda Plank from Green Oaks Township. I just want to say good evening to the commissioners. Tonight, the vote to elect the chair and vice chair will impact you, the county employees, and the residents of our county. What makes a good leader? Good leaders possess self-awareness, garner credibility, focus on relationship building, have a bias for action, exhibit humility, stay authentic, present themselves as constant and consistent, become role models, and are fully present. My hope is that you thought through which commissioner could represent the board based on those qualities. The definition of a good leader does not include someone who is part of the good old boys' club and a buddy. It does not include someone who has promised to further your political career. In other words, there should be no quid pro quo when it comes to electing the board chair. After my two years on the board, I had a front-row seat under the previous leadership. I believe the previous chair dedicated himself to the job and attended almost every meeting. He was engaged with departments, asking questions and trying to understand the needs and wants of those departments. And for that hard work, I was grateful. But please don't let the chair or any commissioner do your homework. I recommend that after you review data and information presented by a commissioner or the chair, you meet with department heads and affiliated board members for additional information. Do your due diligence and request information from both sides. Other than that, the previous chair is a great guy. I don't think his leadership style is what the board needs. We need someone who is willing to listen to both sides, run the meetings, be fully present, and doesn't manipulate board rules. In my opinion, that person is Commissioner Gross. He is very humble and will bring sanity back to the board. As most of you know, I lost to Jay Gross in the August primary. And when I called to congratulate him the next day, I said that if I had to lose to anyone, I was glad it was him since we both share most of the same values. My endorsement for Commissioner Gross as the chair should speak volumes to you based on my time on the board with Jay. I come before you without a personal agenda. All I want is leadership that is best for the county residents and what is best for the hardworking and dedicated county employees. You need a chairman who recognizes that you are his equal. And I think that person is Jay Gross. Please request secret ballots and don't share who you voted for. This will help you in your relationships. Thank you for your time and good luck.
Thank you. Janine Ayer, if you could provide your name and location, please.
Janine Ayer. I live in Green Oaks Township. Good evening, commissioners, and I'm just commenting just to say thank you for sitting where you are. Some of you are retired and you could be doing other things in your retirement. Some of you are still working and you have a very rigorous job. Some of you are business owners, but yet you're here sitting to provide leadership for our county. And so I would like to thank each of you for doing that. It's no small thing to be a commissioner, to run for office, and to do your job with excellence. So my only comment is thank you. And I just, my prayers will be with you throughout these next two years for wisdom and strength in these difficult times. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Alyssa, if you could provide your full name and city or township of residence.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to be very quick and follow up in line with what Janine said. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome aboard, new commissioners. Very nice to see you there. And good luck at all of this. I look forward to seeing what everyone has to bring to the table this year. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
I see no more hands raised on Zoom, so we will go ahead and close the first call to the public. There is a second call to the public that will take place later in the meeting. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We do have the meeting minutes that are dated December 27, 2022.
Motion, Smith. Support Gross.
Are there any additions, subtractions, or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. There are no tabled items from previous meetings, so we will move on to approval of the agenda.
Approved the agenda. Helserman. Support Smith.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner Drick.
I would like to add an 11D and 11E as motions to postpone resolutions 2022-12-202. And the 202 is the important number. And 2022-12-2003 that were in the agenda of December 27, 2022 on the basis that they were premature.
Are you at, Madam Chair?
Just a moment. I just want to understand, you're asking to add a motion to postpone? I believe that was what you stated, is you want to, as item numbers 11D and E, a motion to postpone 2022, 12, 202, and 2003.
11D would be 202 and 11E would be 203 for discussion purposes.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Helserman. Yes, Commissioner Helserman.
Isn't the more correct thing to do is to ask for reconsideration?
I'm going to defer to legal counsel on this. I'm not, I'm not, I will defer to legal counsel.
So Commissioner Drick, if this would be acceptable to you, I would suggest that we take your proposed amendment to the agenda and just make it a light, item 11D discussion on those two resolutions. And then if you want to make a motion to postpone at that point in the agenda or to reconsider or rescind or any of those things, that can be done at that item in the agenda, which I would suggest 11D discussion regarding the resolutions that you referenced.
So we'll go on the agenda? Agreed.
So for clarification, that's a motion for discussion of these. 2022, 12, 202 will be 11D. Sorry, I'm doing multiple things here and I want to make sure to get these listed correctly. And 203 will be item 11E.
That's fine to have those separated like that, yes.
Okay.
That's accurate.
Okay, so we do have a motion to make that change. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Deaton. So we do have a motion and support. Is there any discussion on this amendment to the agenda? Commissioner Helserman.
Yes, I will not be voting in favor of putting this on the agenda tonight. I think, I voted in favor of both of these last time. I would be voting again in favor of them. In my mind, the people who voted on this had full authority to do so. And I, although I think the people on this board may have a different opinion, they may do, we may do what the majority wishes, but I will not be supporting this amendment to the budget.
Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I too voted in favor of these two resolutions last month. And I'm in favor of reconsideration for several reasons. First of all, with respect to the question of the stipend, I feel that there is a very important need for a salary adjustment. And I think, I think that can be best done by adjusting the pay scale as opposed to doing a stipend. I'm convinced that there's a need on several bases to make the adjustment and make it effective for 2023, which I can allude to when we get into discussion. With respect to the second item, I voted in favor of it, although I did have concerns with respect to the timing. And I voiced that concern at the time when we took the vote. And I would like to be able to have some further discussion on that item as well. So I would be supporting the motions to reconsider and looking forward to having discussion on both items. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I think I'll just go ahead and roll call this. Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
No.
Commissioner Domas. Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri.
I have a quick, can I ask a question here? Can I get the clerk to state what we're actually voting on?
It's a motion to add discussion of resolution 2022, 12, 202, and 203 as items 11D and 11E.
As discussion items?
Correct.
I'll vote yes.
Motion carries. So I will be looking for an amendment to, or excuse me, a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
So move Gross.
Second, Drick.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion carries. Are there any commissioners that have reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the reports. And we will move on to the business at hand, the resolutions for consideration. The first resolution this evening is 2023-01-001, election of the board chair for 2023. I think the resolution in front of you has done a great job of setting out the procedure that's going to be followed. So at this point in time, I will open up the floor for nominations for chair for the Livingston County Board of Commissioners for 2023.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Drick.
Is this appropriate time to ask for a secret ballot? If it is, then I'd ask for the secret ballot.
You know what, let's take nominations first and then we'll go ahead. And, you know, if you would like to make that motion, I will certainly make that offer. So we'll go ahead and since nominations are open, are there any nominations for board chair?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Helserman.
I nominate Wes Nakagiri.
Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Sample.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Domas.
Okay, Commissioner Sample nominates Commissioner Domas. Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Smith.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Jay Gross.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Are there any, I'll ask one more time, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. And at this time, Commissioner Drick, if you would like to make your motion, go ahead and if you would please just give me the wording that you would like to make the motion.
Commissioner Drick moves for a secret ballot for the election of board chair. Support. Is, I have a point of order. Is that, is that a vote or is any request?
Part of the authority vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, hold on, I'm just sitting here writing. I want to make sure I have this. It does, and you will see, it, it takes a majority vote for this to move to a secret ballot. Just for people who are here or who may be attending, there is only one Michigan law that allows a secret ballot for the position of Chairperson for the Board of Commissioners. That's Michigan Compiled Law forty-six point three A. It cannot be used for election of the Vice Chair strictly for the Chair. So we do have a motion and support. Is there any discussion on the motion for a secret ballot for Board Chair? Seeing no discussion, all of those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
We have eight ayes, yes, and one no, motion carries. So we will use a secret ballot. At this point in time, Amy, if you would like to, we will distribute the ballots. The three candidates that have been nominated is our Wes Nakagiri, Dave Domas, and Jay Gross. So if you would just complete your ballot, fold it in half, we'll be back around to collect those in, in just a moment, so. Just for clarification to people that are in the boardroom or, you know, attending via Zoom, a candidate must receive five votes in order to be elected as the Board Chair, so. Feel like I should have Joe come up here and assist with the tally.
You can't afford him. He's wearing gloves.
Okay, we have Commissioner Nakagiri received two votes, Commissioner Gross received two votes, and Commissioner Domas received five votes. So I would like to congratulate Commissioner Domas on his appointment as Chair of the Board of Commissioners for twenty twenty-three, and I will hand this meeting over to you, my friend.
I don't know whether I like that last. Good to be back, and and quite honestly, I think any one of the people who were nominated would, would serve just as well. I look forward to working with everyone on this board. And I hope that I can learn an awful lot from him. I'm sure I will. This board has some unique talent. We have young men from, when I say young men, you know, if you're under seventy, in my book, you're young. But we've had, we have people here who have been self-employed, people have come from different areas in government, federal government as well as local governments. And we have, as I say, self-employed people and a couple of numbers guys that I think are really sharp. Former Commissioner on the Brighton Board of Education, who is, who brought them out of debt. I don't want to make a speech for you, but if you'd care to give me the numbers, I'd be glad to let them out.
No, over eight point five million dollars on a fifty million dollar annual budget.
That's incredible.
The deficit was eight point five million.
Yeah, it's incredible. And the school is still running. Would you believe that? They didn't fail, and they're probably teaching very, very well. And Frank Sample, who is the gentleman next to him, is currently a contractor in, in Livingston County, has earned his living with his family in the construction business, currently doing a huge project. I don't want to talk too much about it because I'll have people lining up here wanting to hire you, so. But he's an outstanding gentleman, and he's a family man, and we're proud to have him. The third gentleman that let him introduce himself, quite frankly, but he is a gentleman from other areas in government. And Roger Deaton is an outstanding contribution to this board. And he's been an outstanding contribution to the veterans in this community. He's a veteran himself. And we're proud to have him, and he's looking for, we're looking for great things from you, Roger. Along with all of the other five members of the board, I'm pleased to be here, and I look forward to a great two years. So thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Excuse the interruption. I just would like to take one final formality to confirm this process for you.
Did I accept the nomination?
Nope, not that, but we, we did a motion for a secret ballot. We know the results of the motion. Now I would offer that it would be in order to approve the resolution confirming that you are the Board Chair for two thousand and twenty-three, which is in the agenda packet there at zero zero one.
All right, so will anybody? Well, how do we handle that? Do you want us to approve it?
We just need a motion and support.
All right.
I, I move that we accept the ballot.
All right, thank you.
Support is given.
And we'll take, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, we have a new chair. I guess that's, we're official. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I think at this point it's appropriate to destroy the ballots.
Excuse me, I'm going to defer to legal counsel. I do not believe we'd destroy those. We, we keep those on record, correct? Could you provide guidance?
The board could motion to, there's no legal requirement that we do. Generally, if there's a question about whether or not somebody voted a certain way, it's a best practice so that it can be verified, but there's no legal requirement that we preserve them. And since we've just affirmed the resolution by a majority vote, frankly, he is the chair regardless of what those ballots say.
Mr. Chair, I move that we destroy the ballots.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, but who, who was the second on that? Okay, so we have a move by Commissioner Helserman. Commissioner Deaton, second. Okay, thank you. New voices to get used to. I apologize.
I nominate. Do you need a vote?
No.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The next item on the agenda is the election of a Board Vice Chair. I, I choose to nominate Jay Drick to be the Vice Chair of this commission.
Second.
Are there any? Are there any? All right, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Welcome aboard, Jay. Now it's, now it's both of us. I'm not alone. See, I feel so much safer.
So I'm sorry to interrupt again.
All right.
So we only had one nomination. We just had a, a vote, but I just want to make sure that we're approving the resolution with Commissioner Drick as Vice Chair because we missed the motion on following the nomination. So if a motion would be in order to approve Commissioner Drick as the Voice Chair per resolution two zero two three zero one zero zero two.
Anybody else?
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Sample?
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll get the hang of it sooner or later, Counselor. Now we have a resolution two zero two three dash oh one dash zero zero three. A resolution adopting the rules of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners and to establish meeting dates for the year two thousand and twenty-three.
Move the resolution, Helserman?
Moved by Commissioner Helsman.
Support Smith?
And supported by Commissioner Smith. Anybody have any comments and concerns about the, the calendar or any of the rules?
I have a, a series of amendments that I'd like to discuss if this is the appropriate time.
Certainly.
Okay, first one, I believe is on page eighteen of our agenda. It's under B, Order of Business Agenda. I move that we change the agenda template by moving the approval of the agenda from item, I believe it's I to E, and move all the other items down as shown here. I believe that that's a clearer way. It's better to have the agenda early in the meeting.
Want to move the agenda to a different place in the agenda?
Yes, exactly.
You want to move the board rules?
No.
All right. Is that, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Does he have his support?
Support, Gross.
Any questions or discussions? Nobody? All those in favor of the motion to move the agenda to a different place on the agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. Chair, I have another amendment, if I could, please. I move, this is on page fourteen of our work. See, page fourteen down at the bottom, under Committees. Article four, Section A, Standing Committees. I, I move the following, that the I move that the Finance Asset Management Committee will be a committee of the whole with a quorum of only four. I, I believe that the Finance Committee needs to be expanded to be a committee of the whole.
Anybody support that? Let me just comment, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner Nagagiri?
I'll support it.
Okay. How about any discussion?
I'd like to talk about it. Sure. We used to have, the, the Finance Committee used to be a committee of the whole. And it was a kind of a self-standing committee. And we met Wednesday mornings at seven thirty. And each individual committee would pass whatever they did. The Finance Committee would take every resolution from, from these committees and give it a second approval before, before we came to to the whole. So everybody, not just the committee, would have a, a full discussion. Everybody have a full discussion at the Finance Committee. And I just think that, that the amount of information that is handled by the Finance Committee is something that the full board should have access to speak on at least twice at the committee level and at the full board level. And so that is, and, and as far as four or five, it makes no difference to me. I, I just think that four would make it kind of like, like the other committees that we only have four. I don't, maybe we'll have five on the committees, but that's the reason why I put that.
Are there any other comments? Commissioner Nagagiri?
I have a question for legal counsel on the the doing what the resolution wants. It's, I'll say, different than I'm used to. Is that past legal muster?
So it will. The board can establish a lower quorum requirement. Quorum is actually not legally defined, believe it or not, but the thing that is required is that the final passage, so anything that is completed by the board has to be done by a majority of those elected and serving. So as long as all items considered by the Finance Committee are forwarded on to the full Board of Commissioners for final passage, which will have a quorum of five, and then also have the five-vote requirement with a board composed of nine, you can have a reduced quorum requirement for your committee.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Joe Gross? Yes, sir. I as Commissioner Helsman has indicated, I would support increasing the membership of the Finance Committee from four to the full nine commissioners. And I would further suggest that instead of just having four as a forum for voting purposes, that should be a minimum of five to alleviate the necessity of having somebody break a tie. And so I, I favor nine, but I'd like to go to five in terms of voting.
Commissioner Smith, did you ever hear?
No, Mr. Commissioner Gross handled my concern.
The, originally, the Finance Committee was a committee of the whole as well. And the purpose of making, giving it that authority was because everything that went through Finance touched all of the other areas in government, whether it was personnel, whether it was animal control, or public service, or the Sheriff's Department, or whatever. Everything went through Finance, and so it was the last scrubbing before it came to the board. Now, there's no reason why anybody couldn't attend the meeting of one of these other committees and their public safety, general government, and personnel. There are four members in each of those as, as it is now. And, and by the time they leave that committee and go to Finance, and then go on to the board, it looks as though the people who were here long before us saw some wisdom in that. And I would propose that we restore the board, or the Finance Committee to a membership of nine. The committees that have four members on them, if there's a tie, the vote is a no. And if there's, if the chairman is in the audience, he can break a tie. So I think we still cover those bases pretty well. So would you accept the change? Yes, sir.
I don't know if any of the other commissioners have a comment. I've already spoken once, so if there's anybody else that has something, I would yield to them before I make my second comment.
Right ahead, Commissioner.
I, one reason I wanted to increase the size of Finance Committee to a full board, nine members, is that for the past year or so, there's been four members of the Finance Committee, and some of the commissioners who were not members of that committee chose to stay and observe what transpired. And generally speaking, any handouts were not provided to the commissioners in the audience seats. And I, I felt it was a bit of a disservice that all the commissioners did not have access to the same information. So that's, I, if I had my druthers, I'd have all nine members of the Finance Committee voting. But I'd be willing to. but I'd be willing to settle for five with the provision that any commissioners attending to observe the meeting be granted the opportunity to have access to the same information as the committee members.
I think the issue with the information provided to other commissioners is an easy one to resolve. I think they should always receive everything that all of the other commissioners receive, whether they're on a committee or not. And I've seen that happen in the past, works pretty well. You can always throw it away if you don't want it, but for most people that get them, they read them, and that's why they're here. So I would like to see nine, if you, if you would concede that, Commissioner?
Nine, that's a committee of the whole.
That's a committee of the whole?
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's, that's what, that's what it means.
Commissioner, we don't have a time limit, yet. I'm looking at you, Wes.
Yeah, just for clarification, it's, we'll have a, the Finance Committee will be a committee of nine, a committee of the whole, and it'll have a, it'll have a quorum requirement of four or five.
It'll be five.
Okay.
You'll, you'll have to, I'll, I'll, I'll take that as a friendly amendment, I'll move it to five.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Yes, Commissioner?
So if the quorum that still means that Finance Committee's resolutions are still going from yet another full board?
That's right. And you remember that committees and our, our advisory, none of these committees that we have have the authority to make legislation or ordinances or rules. And that goes for the Finance Committee, too. So a lot of times, when the Finance Committee would deal with an issue, it, it involves other areas that some of these commissioners may not be up to speed on. It's always an opportunity to learn something from that Finance Committee. And it gives us, I think, a thorough scrubbing of the issue before we ask nine other people who may not have had any opportunity along the way to vote on it. So Commissioner Smith, you're nodding, is that?
I always nod.
Oh, you always do?
I'm like a bobblehead.
Are there any other comments? What exactly is the amendment that you want to?
Okay, I move that the Finance Committee, Finance Asset Management Committee will be a committee of the whole, or the whole board, with a quorum of five. That's my amended
Okay.
Amendment.
So we will also, we will have Personnel Committee, Public Safety Committee, General Government Committee. Those are all committees of four, their advisory, and a Finance Committee, which has a membership of nine. Yes, sir?
Oh, I was assuming that we would address the Finance Committee separately, but I would like to make a motion that there would be five board members on each of the other committees as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah.
You have to vote on the amendment.
Finance first.
All right, so are there any other comments on the issue of whether to make this Finance Committee Committee of the Whole? Is there no other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? We have a committee of the whole for the Finance Committee.
I, I have several others, but I will pass to other commissioners and pick up the other ones later, give some other, other commissioners chance to amend as they wish.
Commissioner Nagag, agree, did you have one? Yes, sir. Commissioner Drake?
I'd like to have the commission consider that we scrap the words silent reflection and put in the word prayer, and then have it optional that we have a schedule of who might bring in, who might either pray themselves as a commissioner for the rest of us, or bring in a another person to pray for us that day. But I'd like to see it as a moment of prayer. So I make that motion that we amend our agenda to a moment of prayer.
Support.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Who, who was it?
Wes.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have a motion on the floor to change moment of silence to a moment of prayer?
Yes.
A moment of prayer. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair. I, I would like to, I think this is a broader discussion. And before we institute it, or as part of the institution of this, that we refer to a proper committee, I don't know whether it's a government committee to work out the details, because a lot of different places do this a lot of different ways. And I'd rather get it right the first time, instead of get it wrong and have to change it or be forced to change it. So I'm favorable to it, but I'm favorable to do it upon it being given to a committee to to, to make sure that we have our, everything done correctly before we institute it. An institution of this would be upon approval of the, of the full board at that particular time, because I know, I've thought about this, I've got a lot of ideas, but I think that I don't know if we want to discuss it now.
So you want another committee?
No, no, just refer to the government committee, the committee that would, that would, that could discuss it, whichever committee you think is the appropriate committee.
Anybody else have any comments? Commissioner Gross?
Well, I support Commissioner Helsman's recommendation, I think. The possibility of having a moment of prayer at, at each board meeting. We would need to have some discussion conversation regarding how are we going to manage this? Are we going to be worried about religious affiliation? You know, who, who would be designated as the person to author the prayer? Could it be a commissioner, could it be Sheriff Murphy, perhaps? You know, I, I think some aspects of the, of the idea need to be discussed thoroughly, and so I would, I would support assigning this responsibility to most likely General Government Committee.
Anybody else? Mr. Nagag, agree?
Just a point of order, there's a motion to, and support, that if we're going to change course, we need to vote on, we need to vote on the motion and the support that's on the floor right now.
Yeah.
Or, or have the the, the Commissioner Drake, who offered the amendment to withdraw.
Mr. Drake, you want to handle that?
All right, you're like, I don't see, I don't, I don't see that it's such a tough thing. I can do both even, I mean, change it to prayer now and then have the government.
How about?
Get into it, too.
I was about to say, we don't need another committee, but this sounds like a time to talk about one. And I can think of at least two people that ought to be on it. And, and maybe three, I think Wes would.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need a separate committee, I think we need to give it to a committee, get it, give it to the general government, an existing committee.
Give it a.
Because
All right, you want to pick one?
This is something, I would say, general government, you know.
Okay, so can we change this?
Sure, let's, let's send it there.
To refer this matter to general government?
Tap the brakes and go with that.
Okay. All, am I, we got a motion on the floor? It's been amended.
Second, I would, I've agreed to the friendly amendment.
So do we understand what that, what that agreement finally is? There'll be a? Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other? I almost forgot where we are on the agenda.
Oh, we're, we're in the middle of, of rate right now, aren't we, or see? So I
Yeah. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We recently concluded defining the membership of the Finance Committee. I, at this point, would like to make a motion that we change the membership of the other three committees, personnel, general government, and public safety from four commissioners to five commissioners.
Support.
Are there any other comments on it? You want to change the, the committee number to five in both, in all three of those other committees, is that it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is that the last of it?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chair, I would like to look at our calendar. Each year, we, we bump into year-end issues of timing, including the approval of the annual budget, which I know we worked diligently to move forward, but it always comes down to a crunch. And with year-end vacations becoming more and more prolific, I would suggest that we move the final board of the season, of the calendar year, from December twenty-sixth to December twentieth.
I have, I have a Wednesday evening conflict, could it be the twenty-first?
That, that's a great alternative.
Are there any other changes to the calendar? All those in favor of making that change in the calendar signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, I didn't hear a support on that.
We don't have the support.
I didn't hear with support. Is there a second on that, motion to amend the calendar?
Is there any reason why we couldn't make it the nineteenth and just back them up?
I don't think we can really discuss this until there's a support anybody.
All support.
Gross? All those in favor of changing?
Discussion. There's some people that wanted to talk about it.
All right, do we have a discussion? Anybody care to add something? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I was wondering if we could make it the nineteenth, it said, wouldn't be breaking the week up so much, that last week of the year. Is it possible to do that?
What do you think, the?
Eighteenth and the nineteenth?
Getting, you know, as, as I see, the problem of having a, a meeting and then a meeting is, you know, our, I think our administrator should chime in on that, Mr. Chair, if that's okay with you.
Okay, so I was, I, I think this could be done, that the issue with having back-to-back meetings is that we, we don't know what'll be on the nineteenth's agenda, because it'll be pending what happens on the eighteenth. We could still notice the meeting in advance and then provide the agenda the night of, but if you'd like to get the agenda sooner than it, it just, it's, it's tough, because we can't produce an agenda till we know what came out of committee. So if we had a couple of days, that's easier, but I think it could be done the next day, as long as we were able to notice the meeting in advance. And is that correct, Matt? We're not required to publish an agenda?
That's right, there's no agenda requirement under the OMA, it's just an operational consideration.
Yeah, so, so as long as, you know, you understood that you weren't going to have an agenda till that night, then it could be done logistically from, from our office.
The other possibility is make the eighteenth meeting a committee of the whole and take care of it, and take care of everything on the eighteenth, I don't know, that's, you know, that we.
Commissioner Pionni?
It was a committee of the whole meeting, though. Any resolution that was passed, I don't think would be official or formal, or formally approved by the board in that regard. Is that correct? I'm just seeking clarification.
What we used to do is, when we had a finance meeting, we would have, we would, we would have a a full board meeting right afterwards, so we'd post both of them for the same day. And then with a consent agenda, we could just do a consent agenda instead of bringing it all up. It seems to me if you're going to have, if you're going to go to the nineteenth, it seems to me that you should have it on the eighteenth and just handle it the same night. We, we can always, if, if things get hairy, then we can change it. You know, because we had the same situation this year, and we went back and forth. And whatever we need to do, we can do, so.
Mr. Gross?
I, I would support moving up the final meeting of the year to sometime earlier, but from a slightly different approach. Within the last several months, I've been in contact with folks who have expressed a concern about us not having a budget until almost the end of December. And there's, there's been an expression of concern on that, that if there was some way we could expedite the budget process and and get that finalized and put to bed, then we wouldn't have to worry about it in the last week of December. That's just a bit of information that may be relevant. Thank you.
Good point. When are we legally required to, to post a budget?
We have to have it adopted by New Year's Eve, by the end of, end of the year, December thirty-first, by law. Our target for this calendar would be to have you voting on a budget on November twenty-seventh. So if something falls through, if something goes haywire last minute, then we have those meetings in December. But this year, the budget was approved November twenty-eighth, we usually like to target that last meeting in November to pass the budget, and then that gives us the month behind if, or a month, you know, yet in December if there are issues, but typically, we, we target that second meeting in November.
Well, that's kind of like Christmas week, I mean, what could possibly go wrong? We make it in the same year. Is there any reason why we have to wait until December? Is there?
Well, again, we're, we're targeted, we're, I'm going to give a budget recommendation to the Finance Committee on October twenty-third, per our normal course of events, and then in the following month, it would go to you all for discussion and, and, and then, again, a vote on the twenty-seventh. So we're not targeting December. But if you're, but we need to have a fallback plan in case it doesn't get adopted in, in, in November. Our target is November. The budget process is going to start in April, and we're going to have a revenue forecasting committee that meets in early May, and that's how long it takes us to get to an adopted budget. And so there's not a ton of wiggle room, because part of that is revenue estimates, and if you do those really, really far in advance, then you're going to have to come back and redo them anyway. And so we feel pretty comfortable with our process. And again, our target is always to be done with it in November, and it was this year. And I think it was two years ago as well.
Do we always come back for budget adjustments?
Oh, sure.
Pretty much, so.
Oh, yeah.
What's new?
Yeah, budget amendments happen quarterly or as needed.
So is there any reason why we couldn't start in March?
Well, the reason is that the, it's harder to forecast revenue for a full year out, earlier in the previous year that you started. So that, that would be a, a little bit of a challenge, because the whole budget is built around those revenue estimates, and waiting until early May gets a little bit closer to the time that we're, we're targeting and we're focusing for. If the board, we, we bring a resolution to the board every year that adopts a budget calendar. And so we, we follow that resolution for how we do it. I, I mean, I would ask our CFO if she has concerns about March, but my concerns will be focused largely on revenue estimates.
My biggest concern is our pension. We don't get our pension number until the end of June, and we also won't get our health number till right around June of July. And those are major expenses for the account.
So we should leave it until, well, I guess we'll just leave it till we have to deal with it in, in amendments, I suppose. We'll start it in April like we always have. Yes, Commissioner?
Uh, one other possibility with respect to the schedule for the budget is that this past summer, due to, uh, several constraints, we, we managed to compress the budget reviews, marathon sessions, uh, a number of days. And while that is the most desirable, uh, obviously, uh, but it's something we could do so that maybe even starting with the regular schedule that you and Cindy have identified, uh, when it gets up to the point of budget reviews, maybe we could compress that, bring in the backend, so to speak. We could look at that.
Yeah, we're, we would be open to any process that doesn't mess up the budget. And, and I just, I don't, it's, it's difficult to do it, you know, 11 or 10 months in advance. So, so it's gonna play out through the year organically, because of when we get certain financial information. But if there's a way to structure the Level Two presentations differently, we're open to that. And really, I mean, certainly, this is a topic that'll go to the Finance Committee for, for discussion, uh, before the calendar is adopted. But there, there is a reason why it's, it's set up the way it is now. It's not, you know, that, we, there's rationale to it.
Thank you.
Could, could we have the motion read, please, as it is?
Commissioner, Commissioner Smith made a motion to move the December 26th meeting to December 21st. And Commissioner Gross is the second on that.
Any problems with that? Anybody have a problem with doing that? Can we? All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Are there any other changes to the, uh, calendar? Changes to the rules?
I couple more here. At least one, uh, at the very end of the rules, it talks about the latest edition. I believe it's on page, I have page 15, but somehow that doesn't sound right. It's page 28 of, or 26 of, of, uh, the agenda. It's the last page of the, the board rules. Right at the top, C, it says, "The latest edition of Robert's Rule shall apply when the board rules are not, uh, not, do not address an issue." And, uh, I looked up, and the latest edition is the 12th edition. If that is correct, I move, uh, that, that in Article, uh, eight, Section C, the word "latest edition" should be replaced by the 12th edition.
Is that a motion?
I so moved, yes.
Anybody support that? If we call it the last edition, is it necessary to give it a birth date?
Hello?
I think we could probably get along without that.
Okay.
Although it's a good thought.
Okay, uh, then I have one more that.
You, you mean, all right, go ahead.
Because nothing, nobody's seconded.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, can I ask if that's a formal withdrawal of your motion?
I withdraw, I withdraw the motion, due to lack of a second. Uh, and I believe this will be my final, uh, one. This is, uh, in regard to Article Five, I believe it's on page 17. Oh, yeah, committee appointments, this is an add-on here to F. Uh, and I would ask that, um, I move that the following amendment be considered to move, to add a paragraph two, as it's shown on the piece of paper that I have, that I gave to the clerk. Uh, any elected and serving, this is my motion. I've moved that any elected, that we add this to, uh, to that Article Four, section about committees, that we add this wording under section, uh, under paragraph two. "Any elected and serving commissioner may sit in a limited ex officio position, different from the chairman's power on any committee." They may, uh, they must sit at the dais. They have full rights, uh, of, uh, full rights of the, of a, a sitting commissioner, with the exception of making motions, supporting, or voting.
So that means they would be sitting up here?
They could. They could if they chose. They could. The, the reason that I'm doing it is that any commissioner can sit on any committee and be part of the discussion, but not vote. Again, uh, there are times when we, as commissioners, are sitting, uh, in the audience of a committee, and we have a particular question, and we can't address it until the final decision. Uh, I think that that would take care of it. Uh, we used to have, uh, with the Finance Committee, considering everything, we used to have that without, uh, asking questions at, uh, the first committee level. Well, anyways, that's.
So people who are commissioners, who are not members of that committee, they participate in voting?
No, not voting.
Not voting.
They can't make motions, they can't second, they cannot vote, but they can be part of the discussion. They can be officially a part of the discussion, but with no power to vote, because.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
I agree, we apologize for interrupting, but, and perhaps I missed it, but I don't believe there was a second.
Right.
Yeah, and so I don't think we're permitted to discuss.
Okay, good point. The motion needs support? Uh, it was drawn, okay. All right. Are there any other comments on this resolution? Or, I'm sorry, on the motion? Commissioner Smith?
Subparagraph three reads, "In the event that the normally formed quorum for a committee is not present."
That was not part of, I'm not doing that. I'm, I'm not, it's number two.
Okay.
I, I am not proposing that we, uh, that we, I'm not proposing that, in that we, because we moved the committees to five, I don't think that that is necessary.
Okay. So if I can, for clarity, then you're looking at, the handout you gave us is, is committee appointment number one, and?
The committee with the number one is, is the wording that's already there.
Yep.
And section two is the one that I, "Any elected and serving commissioner may sit in a limited ex officio position, different from the chairman's power on any committee." They must, to do this, they must sit at the dais. Uh, they have full rights of, of any commissioner, but they cannot, with the exception of making motions, supporting, or voting. They, they have a full discussion privileges, but they're not voting. They have no voting rights, they can't make a motion, uh, that, you know, they can't, you know.
Thank, thank you, and you're, and you're deleting subparagraph three, then?
Yeah, subparagraph three, uh, I am, because of, because we're making the committees larger, that is not necessary.
Anyone else? Now, the motion's been made and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? And I know. Now we're ready to vote on the rules. Yeah, they have to, they have to vote on this motion unless there's more, unless there's more. Are there any other changes made to the rules, Commissioner, Commissioner Gross?
Uh, yes, on the original agenda page eight of 19, that shows the, uh, the areas of responsibility for the respective committees under Item Three, General Government Human Services Committee. I subject to correction, or whatever, I, I would like to propose that we add the Council on Livingston County, uh, Council on Aging to that committee. Um, I'm not sure it's necessarily a subcommittee of the Human Services Collaborative Body. It's my understanding that the Council on Aging was a, set up and approved by the Board of Commissioners. And so, of that being the case, I, I think that should be identified as being the responsibility of the General Government, Health and Services, Health and Human Services Committee. And then, under the next page, under Courts, Public Safety Infrastructure, uh, that.
Excuse me, uh, you're going a little too fast for me? So if you could.
Okay.
Slow down.
Yes.
What was your change?
I wanted to add Council, the Livingston County Council of Aging as another responsibility under General Government. And we should have, uh, at least one, if not two commissioners appointed to that, to that group. It's been past practice. And then the second, the second change is under the Courts Public Safety and Infrastructure Development Committee. Our Planning Department is included under that umbrella, and the Planning Department has co-responsibility for the Parks and Open Space Committee. And so I think that should be identified as being under, under the umbrella of Public Safety, as a separate item. And again, that was a, a subcommittee that was, um, appointed and approved by the Board of Commissioners in the past.
So you wanted to add Parks and Recreation Committee to?
Yeah, Open Space Parks, right, yep.
I, I support those changes.
Are there any other changes? Yes, sir.
I'll have one more, but I just.
I'm gonna take care of these first. Okay.
Ready? Ready for vote?
Yes. Mr. Gross has one more.
Well, is, is, is it in the same vein, or is it on a different vein?
Uh, the other change I have?
Yeah.
Well, it, it may not be a change on the, on page, uh, page describing general duties of standing committees that follows the Courts of Public Safety, uh, layout. Item one, two, three, four says, uh, "Standing committees will study and submit recommendations for adoption of county ordinances." Uh, in my almost three years on the board, I've never heard of any discussion of county ordinances. I'm wondering, do we have a list or a book that identifies those? And if they don't exist, I think we should delete that statement.
There are a couple of ordinances of, there, there are some, we hardly ever do of them.
Uh, I refer to Civil Council, do you tell us which they are?
Yes, you do, I believe you do have some, I don't know what they are off the top of my head. The county does have very limited ordinance power prescribed by law. So even though you may not have one currently in place, there are a few that you could consider in the event you wanted it to come up. And, and I can produce, um, maybe a memo regarding what those are, if you'd like to have that, and maybe also work with administration to see if we can locate what are currently in place here in Livingston County.
That would be satisfactory, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I second the first two.
Support the first two. Are there any other comments or questions? Anything else? All those in favor?
So what exactly are we adding to each part of this?
If I may. As a subset, if you will, of the, um, Human Services and Collaborative Body, which is the last item under General Government. There's a Livingston County Council on Aging, and we have had commissioners appointed to that body. And I think they should be identified as a separate entity. And likewise, with the Parks and Open Space Recreation Committee. That's been a subset, if you will, of the Planning Department, the folks in the Planning Department, generally, uh, find funding and come up with, uh, things to do in the parks. We have two major parks, Lutz and Fillmore, and, uh, that group has been working very diligently on that. I think, uh, that also was created by a vote of the Board of Commissioners in the past. And I feel it should be given some recognition in terms of responsibility under the Public Safety Committee.
These, uh, lists on these two pages are what each committee can do. They can't take somebody else, other committees' responsibilities. They can only deal with the responsibilities here. And they have to be listed in order for the committee to take it up. So, so there was a couple of things that were not on the list that Commissioner Gross thinks are important to be on there.
Okay, Commissioner Naga-Guri?
I have a question for Commissioner Gross. If, with the changes being proposed, I was desirous of understanding the rationale of why the change and, uh, what would happen if we just left it, this, you know, if we didn't make the change and just left the committee's structure the, the way it is, as listed in the, uh, rules currently?
It's been my understa, I mean, it's been my understanding that, um, some of the folks who are participants in these groups, respective groups, uh, particularly Council on Aging, uh, at times feel they, they don't get the recognition of what they are trying to accomplish on behalf of our aging community. And that, uh, they don't necessarily have full backing of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, that same theory applies to the Parks and Open Space Committee. Both, both entities were established by the board, but it's like they're hidden in the closet someplace. And, uh, both entities feel that it would be appropriate that the County Board give, do recognition to what they are working diligently to accomplish.
Yes, Commissioner Sample?
I motion to close discussion.
And we'll take the vote. All those in favor of the, uh?
Point, point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
A motion to close discussion is, uh, a motion to call, call the question.
Call the question.
Which requires two-thirds to, to cut off debate.
I'm, I don't, who, can I ask who seconded that motion? Who seconded the motion to close discussion?
Hang on a second.
Thank you.
So we, we can just call for a vote, or we could also?
Yeah, well, we have to vote to close discussion.
There's no more discussion. I think I can close the discussion, quite honestly.
Well.
Otherwise, we need a two-thirds, uh, vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Now we have to vote on the motion.
Now we can vote on the motion. All right, although, you wanted, you, you wanna just clearly say, tell us what the, what the motion is?
No, this is the whole, this, this is the whole thing. This is all of the, this is all of this.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, we, we've approved the motion, we've approved all the, uh, corrections.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, I, I have the motion on the floor as being a motion by Commissioner Gross to add the Livingston County Council on Aging to the General Government Committee and to add the Parks and Open Space to the Courts and Public Safety.
Right.
That's the motion I have on the floor.
That's correct. So that is your motion. And it's been supported.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Now we'll move on to the next resolution, which is to approve the amended board rules. Do I hear someone moving that?
I, I have that motion moved by, um, Commissioner Helserman and supported by Commissioner Smith.
It happened so long ago, you know, I'm having trouble.
That's why, that's why I'm here taking minutes.
So there's a motion on the floor. It's been supported to approve the, uh, rules changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We'll now move into closed session. We need it.
We have a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have two discussion lines. Mister Brick, you want to introduce those two discussion items?
Thank you. The, uh, particular wording I've written down for the secretary. But I'll read it for my colleagues. J. Erdrick moves resolutions two oh, two, two dash twelve dash two oh, two dated twelve, twenty seven, twenty two. Be not implemented and not effective as hereby postponed. Giving discretion to the board chair to replace on a future agenda. My reasoning and rationale is that we're going to have more requests for stipends or salary bumps in the future.
Commissioners, can I ask that you all speak into your microphone? We're having a very hard time hearing you on Zoom.
My idea is that we're going to have future stipend requests and future salary bump requests, which is perfectly normal. But if we don't establish some criteria today or soon, we are being accused of just ad hoc deciding whether we like somebody or whether, whether somebody's made some kind of case. I understand that one of the, uh, sentences in the resolution that was passed on December twenty seventh was elections are the backbone of democracy. My sense is the courts could come along and say, courts are the backbone of democracy. Sheriff could come along and say, public safety is the backbone of democracy. It's pretty loose. So I'd like to tap the brakes. I'm in favor of more money for the clerk. But I think it'd be smart to tap the brakes a little bit and set up some criteria for this kind of, uh, resolution in the future. And the first one we then would take up would be the clerks. That's what I'm proposing and the reasoning.
Commissioner Dirk, will you be providing me a copy of that, um, wording? Thank you. Very helpful.
Point of order is.
Everything I said is not here, but the good stuff is.
Is not the correct thing to do to have a vote to reconsider, set the, the correct?
So you could do that, but the same threshold for reconsideration under your board rules is, is a majority of those elected and serving. So you have added this as a discussion item to your agenda. It is not out of order because it has not been implemented as far as the change. And, uh, Commissioner Drick, if you'll allow me to answer a question you previously posed. There's not a blanket prohibition that says a former board can't bind a future board. What that means, and it's nuanced, is that if something has not occurred, the new board can take it up, just like you're doing today, and go in a different direction. So there's not a, a specific legal prohibition, but there is the opportunity, if the majority so decides, to make changes to things that can be done through reconsideration. It can also be done by bringing the issue back to an agenda at a later date, which has been done here.
Has there been a question directed at me now or?
Do we need a, do we need a second to the motion?
Do we do have a second, do you need it? No? I'll second the motion. All right, so the motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir, Commissioner, Jill Smith.
Yeah, can I ask our county administrator to come forward and address the issue of, uh, the stipend payment? And if we have any other employees that receive a stipend and for what great reason?
Uh, yes, uh, several elected officials receive stipends for specific activities related uh, to their work. And I apologize, I didn't know this was, um, gonna be on the agenda, but the Drain Commissioner receives a stipend, uh, the Treasurer receives a stipend. Um, there's one more I'm blanking on, um, Register of Deeds, I'm sorry, receives a stipend. So stipends are, um, provided when there's some work, uh, described and undertaken that uh, they do that would be, um, warranting of additional pay. So, yeah, there are several that receive that.
In your, in your experience, uh, given the change in legislature in Lansing and the, uh, additional imposition on the county clerks, uh, would, would a stipend seem a reasonable way to compensate someone for unanticipated extra duties? And would it also uh, not be included in their merits?
So, um, yes, to the first question, I, I mean, I think a stipend's appropriate. It's obviously up to the board if it gets handled that way. One of the things that's, uh, beneficial about a stipend is, again, we're specifying a reason for it as opposed to just saying seventy-five hundred for you. Um, because conversely to what was mentioned earlier, I would be more concerned about other elected officials saying, okay, now where's, where's my wage? Where's my extra wages? And I would remind the board, we just went through a very long, extensive wage study that included the elected officials. The difference with this position, the clerk's office position, is that Prop two hadn't passed at the time that study had concluded. So those new responsibilities were, were not going to be considered at the time that that salary is being looked at. The other issue is that and one of the unintended consequences of that wage study was that the deputy clerk is now on a scale that will eventually uh, supersede the pay of the clerk. And I don't think anybody thinks that that's a good situation to be in. So we were trying to find a way to do this for.
Deputy clerk.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, I didn't know if she would be thrilled with it, but so we were trying to find a way to address that unintended consequence in a way that would limit the discussion of pay increases to the activities in the stipend as opposed to just sort of restarting a wage study that just concluded. Um, so, yeah, that would be my, my answer to that question and, um, obviously the board's, the board's decision.
I also understand, uh, some of my colleagues are looking at this and maybe it should be evaluated through the Personnel Committee and a new salary structure established. And I, uh, I certainly see the logic in that. This is, uh, and, and while the amendment that, or the, um, resolution that was passed addresses the, uh, stipend for, uh, the, the, the current period and annually, uh, in that resolution. I, I do think that this, the, the stipend could be, uh, paid out this year, for example, and then, um, through the Personnel Committee, that salary range and maybe the salary ranges of our elected officials be reviewed and an adjustment made a- at some point during the year. So I, uh, I'm certainly not in favor of, uh, the resolution, uh, the and I think most everybody's heard my opinion on the, um, uh, part two, which is the, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-two, twelve, two oh, three, which is the, um, inflation payment, uh, to the staff in general. That, that genie's out of the bottle. Uh, we, we can certainly gather it back in. We can.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, do I have the floor?
This is off topic. We haven't come to it yet. When, when we discuss eleven E, this is perfectly okay, but we're discussing eleven D.
I'm, I'm sorry, are we not discussing both?
No.
No, just the first.
Take one at a time. All right, that's okay.
I'll save my powder for that then. So I, obviously I'm not in favor of, uh, pulling the, pulling the rug on this one.
I'm sorry. Commissioner, you're, you're not in favor of this stipend? Is that what I understand?
You do not understand correctly. I am not in favor of the, of the proposed amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Gross.
Um, I, I've got a number of, of thoughts on, on this particular proposal. Um, I supported the, the request, uh, previously, uh, for the stipend. Uh, but I did, uh, express a concern about perhaps there was another way that we could accomplish the, the fact, if you will, and that is by adjusting, uh, pay scale, which, uh, Commissioner Smith alluded to. Um, but the other thing is I was um, aghast at the lack of information that was provided to us in the very first resolution. As Commissioner Drick read, it, it's very, very skimpy and doesn't really tell the full story. And the full story being that, um, as a result of the passage of Proposition Two in the November elections, which changed the state's constitution, um, changes are going to take place and it will be the responsibility of all clerks, county as well as townships, to make significant changes in how they conduct elections. The most prominent feature being nine days of early voting. Uh, that's going to require additional preparation, uh, timing of the, uh, uh, availability of employees involved, additional training. Um, and my initial thought was, well, that won't happen until twenty twenty-four. But I have heard on good authority from several township clerks that they anticipate that they will be making changes to their procedures during this calendar year. Um, the other aspect, uh, that was not made clear when we voted on this, uh, previously was that this is an unfunded mandate. We're not going to get any reimbursement of expense from the state. This is entirely on our shoulders. And so if our clerk and her staff are going to have extra effort over and above their original job description, job responsibilities, I, I think an adjustment is in order. And, um, my only concern is that I would rather see it handled through a, a salary, um, scale change as opposed to a stipend. Um, just my thoughts on the subject. Thank you.
Mister Chair, uh, it seems to me that we are going over a field that's already been plowed, um, by others, um. And for that reason, I don't, uh, approve this approach. But what I, what, what I want to get is, is this something that our new members are asking for? Okay? If our new members are asking for it, I understand a reason to look into it. If the new members are at ease with what has been done by the former, uh, board, then I think that we ought not to do it. So, uh, Mister Chairman, I would, I would ask that we get the opinion of our new board members that, um, what's their opinion on this? I think you've been following it enough. I, I would like to hear what, what's your ideas are about this?
Commissioner Dirk, would you read the, that, uh, motion, please? The clerk has, clerk has got the, the only copy we have.
Excuse me, Commissioner Drick moved, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash two oh, two dated December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Be not implemented and not effective as hereby postponed. Giving discretion to the board chair to replace on a future agenda. And it was supported by Commissioner Gross.
And now this resolution that you're referring to that will be post, postponed possibly? What does that exactly provide?
Administrator Bird, I did not write this resolution. Do you want to address that resolution?
Can you approve the agenda minutes?
I apologize. What, what, what question was proposed about the resolution that was passed?
Yeah, what, what was the resolution about that we're considering to put on to postpone?
The resolution that passed last week.
Yes.
Um, I'll just summarize the last point, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby approves a seven thousand five hundred dollar annual stipend of the county clerk. In recognition of election responsibilities, the stipend will be increased each year with any applicable board approved cost of living adjustment and is provided in addition to your board approved compensation. So as it stands now, that is the action that takes place from the resolution that was passed unless something changes.
You indicated that we already do have stipends in the county?
Mm-hmm, for, for three other countywide elected officials.
Well, we have one in the, in the DPW, the Drain Commissioner. As a Drain Commissioner is, is a paid elected official.
Mm-hmm.
And once, once he assumed the responsibility of the DPW, Department of Public Works, he was, he was given by the board, uh, a stipend of, I forget what the number was, but it was substantial.
Yeah.
And I believe the same thing happened, uh, with, uh, the remonumentation program. Who wasn't, uh, was that out of, pardon me?
The Register of Deeds.
So it's clear that, that stipends are, have, have a definite purpose. And they're not necessarily pay increases. I'm not, somebody else can define that differently if they want. But I think there's an opportunity to handle this where we don't start awarding stipends, which have a definite purpose specifically, um, for, uh, where, when other means are available to recognize, uh, the need for a pay increase. Is that pretty much what you're thinking is? Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm not against stipends. I'd like to know that when a resolution hits here, it touches on four, three, five criteria that we've all decided they're important to know. So we have that information. And Commissioner Gross is not aghast as to the lack of information. Or I'm worried about the severe vagueness of the, uh, reasoning in the resolution. I'd like to have, have the criteria. And it's merely a postponement. It's not saying anything about the worth or the number or the value or any of those things. I'd like to have some criteria to decide this one and then for any other one that comes up.
So, yes, Commissioner Smith.
So this race is a really interesting issue. The other stipends are already in place. They're not reviewed annually. They occur automatically. I would think if I were one of the other recipients of a stipend, I would be very concerned right now.
Counselor, is that true? I think I've sat in board meetings where we annually approve stipends.
I don't know that detail. I'll, I'll just say you could. Um, and it may be part of your budget approval process that you're doing so on an annual basis.
And we may not even know about it.
I can't, I can't comment on that.
Yes, Commissioner Nagaguri.
Yeah, I'd like to just to chime in on the discussion. I, I'm in support of, um, maintaining or keeping the stipend for the county clerk. Um, there's a couple of things that are, um, you know, weigh in on my thinking. One is that, uh, uh, and it's been mentioned already, the, um, the deputy clerk, um, if we don't make a change, will, uh, eventually make more money than the clerk. I just think that's inappropriate for, the, that pay scale isn't inappropriate. Um, the, the clerk should, um, being the, the manager, the leader should, should make more than the, than the deputy. The, um, with the, uh, passing of Prop nine, or excuse me, Prop two, um, adding nine days of extra voting for, for reasons that, you know, uh, many of the township clerks came and spoke in, in favor of the stipend. Just, just recently at a recent committee meeting, I am persuaded that that is the, um, having a stipend, um, for the work involved with the, um, the extra days of voting is, um, for the work involved with the, um, the extra days of voting is, um, is, is appropriate to, uh, to pay, to pay the stipend. The, um, I think that, um, in, anyway, that I, um, am supportive. I just wanted to, for the record, say I'm supportive of the stipend. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Commissioner Sample? I'm sorry. Did you have your hand up? Mr. Bird?
No, I did not.
You're just waving. I'm just, you're doing fine. Commissioner Sample?
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sample, if you could please speak into your microphone.
Yeah, there we go. Were the previous stipends given to the following budget year or were they given during that budget?
So I, I may need to defer to people who were here, but my understanding is they were approved initially by the board with the understanding and resolution that they would be annual moving forward, which is the same way that this is written. So they are part of our budget every year based on when they were initially authorized.
Yeah, the reason for, the, the reason for my question is that the stipend that's given, is that because of the work that was performed in 22, 2022, or is it for the work that we perceive is going to be done in 2023? Cause, cause I guess what I'm getting at is we're, we're given a stipend that's paid in 2023, but is it the understanding was for the work that was performed in 22? And the additional works there, the additional work that we're perhaps envisioning going forward?
In this situation, it would be the additional work envisioned going forward that will start in 23 to prep for 24 and then from here on out.
So this might not be enough. This might, this might not recognize the, the effort that's involved of what's going to go forward.
It may very well need to be revised with real world information as we, as we get that.
So, so not only if we approve the stipend as it is, we may have to revisit the fact that this wage needs to be increased on top of the stipends potentially, right?
Potentially, yeah.
So, so for all of us here thinking about this, I guess we may or we may not agree that the, the stipend's the right way to do it. But we obviously all see that there's a point here that the clerk's office, they're going to be tremendously burdened and have been burdened in the past. So there's a need for a wage increase. Not only because there's a deficit between the deputy clerk, but just the work in general. So I guess for me as a new commissioner, because I was asked a question is what do I think about it? I think that there's an understanding that there just needs to be compensation for the work going forward, whether that be in a stipend or wage. So that's how I view it.
Commissioner Smith?
If I can ask the administrator to clarify how these stipends are, are paid.
And I'm going to ask the CFO, I, I actually don't know what timing those get paid. I don't know if Cindy or Jennifer can chime in on that. I see Jennifer's on there.
I'll defer to Jennifer.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Yeah. So with the stipends and, and frankly, we've set this up for payment already, um, moving forward, um, for, for, uh, the county clerk. But those are added into as regular compensation. Um, and I believe only the Register of Deeds because his is approved separately. His stipend is not subject to the cost of living adjustment approved by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, all other stipends are effectively baked into the other wage and all, uh, to their salaries and are also subject. So they're increased by the approved COLA each year.
So.
A cost of living adjustment that's, that's approved by the board.
Can, can I put that in simple banker language? So, so it becomes part of their paycheck?
Yes.
Thank you.
Each pay.
And does it have a termination date?
No.
It doesn't?
Every year. It's, you knew it every year.
Seems to me that, well, I don't know. You'll, you'll know more about this than I will, but the Drain Commissioner's Office annually receives a stipend for the work they do as the DPW.
Correct. Yep. And that's divided up equally as well for 26 pay periods per year and receive the pro rata portion is received each payroll, um, to the Drain Commissioner.
Whereas the stipend that was provided for the, uh, surveying, remonumentation program was annually provided to one of our elected officials so that that money could be distributed to civil engineers for the surveying they did. Essentially, that's what it was.
Uh, that's two different, two different things that we're talking. You're right. Under that remonumentation resolution, there is specified money for, um, I think it's Jack, the surveyor. But there's also specific money that goes to the Dream, I'm sorry, the Register of Deeds himself that's divided equally throughout the year and received in his paycheck on a biweekly basis.
And is this proposal that we're considering here structured along those same lines? Is there anything that makes this a, a new and unique, uh, stipend? Or are there certain stipend rules? Counselor?
I'm sorry. I, I can't answer, I can't answer that question as far as how the county's internally classified this.
The intention, as I understood it, was to treat it as other, uh, another example would be the county treasurer. She has received a stipend that's also, uh, you know, we, we take the total annual stipend, divide it out by the number of pays and it's received each biweekly in her paycheck. I, so my understanding was to handle this one in the same way based on the information in the resolution.
Commissioner Drick, do you have any other thoughts?
My recollection of the wording of the resolution had nothing in it. It was silent as to the future nine days.
Right.
Silent. It was totally about past effort. And therefore I think we need some criteria to help us along the next time. That's, and it's a, it's a adjournment. It's not a cancellation. It's not a throw it out, the, throw it out the window. Still available as the criteria. If we take a month to get some criteria, come back, consider it, vote it. Thank you.
Are there any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have a, a Roberts Rule of Orders question, which I, I probably better read this sucker now.
I didn't hear that.
But maybe, uh, uh, our, our counsel can inform me if we have, this is probably a technical issue, but if we have, uh, a board approval and it's been enacted in terms of our, uh, Human Resources Department putting it, putting it in, in place about to happen, can we even consider it or do we need a brand new resolution?
So again, this is my understanding. We haven't issued the payroll. So it would, you are on to something here, which is partly what I referenced in my prior little discussion about this, which is it would not be in order if it could not be undone. It would, if it, let's say the, the stipend was a $7,500 lump sum payment on January 1st. If that check had been paid, this motion would not be in order. My understanding of the current fact pattern is that although it is processed for payment, it, the payment has not yet been made. So it would be in order for you to consider the motion that is before you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are the, is there any other discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I, I think we should, um, go ahead and, and let the prior resolution become effective. But I think as a result of the discussion tonight, we've made it pretty loud and clear that henceforth, any resolution coming before this board damn well have a lot of information attached to it and not be so vague and subject to misunderstanding, which I think is, is Commissioner Drick's primary concern. I share that concern and, uh, you know, we need to have the information surrounding the concept, the idea presented to us so that we really know what we're doing, what we're voting on. It's clearly as possible. And, uh, so I, I think we should go ahead with the stipend or a salary adjustment. I think there's a, a strong need for it. Regardless of how the resolution has been worded, uh, that part is behind us. Let's hopefully have a better process going forward. Thank you.
So the, the resolution right now asks for a postponement, doesn't ask for approval, if I'm correct.
I can read, I can read the motion, um, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Drick moved Resolution 2022-12-202 dated December 27th, 2022 be not implemented and not effective as hereby postponed, giving discretion to the board chair to replace on a future agenda. That's the motion, um, made by Commissioner Drick, supported by Commissioner Gross.
I personally think that if what we, uh, hear this evening is factual and that the, um, the clerk does assume these additional responsibilities, even though we're not getting reimbursed by the state for it, it doesn't leave us off the hook. We could take that approach with almost anything. And, uh, it's unfortunate that the only thing left that we appear to have would be a stipend or to reject that stipend and somehow working in through a, um, increase in income.
Mr. Chair, can we vote on this?
I'm asking for a couple of them.
I'm just asking you if it's possible for us to vote on.
Sure, sure. Everything's possible. Yes, Commissioner.
You want me to read? I want to just clarify, what would you like me to read the motion one more time? You're, you're voting on the, the motion to, um, move resolution, this resolution dated not be implemented and not effective as hereby postponed, giving discretion to the board chair to replace on a future agenda. So that's the actual motion made by Commissioner Drick, supported by Commissioner Gross. That's what you're voting on.
Yeah. Are there any other comments? Any other discussion going? All right then, we'll hear a vote on this motion. All those in favor of postponing this stipend until some future date selected by me. I knew I'd get in this somehow. Please raise the right hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Yeah. We'll move on to the next resolution. You have another one. Commissioner Drick, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I just voted against the, uh, proposed amendment, having supported it earlier. And the reason for that is I felt it was a topic that needed discussion by the full board. And so that's why I supported Commissioner Drick's, um, uh, motion. But I, I don't feel it would, it's in our best interest to postpone anything. Thank you.
I think we, I think you've made a point and, and, uh, we'll, we'll leave it at that. We have one more resolution, uh, Commissioner? Dirk, did you have another?
I yield the floor to Commissioner Fiani.
Okay.
I move to discuss Resolution
Motion made by Commissioner Fiani, is it supported? Is that you?
Drick.
Great. Okay.
Could you tell us the guts of it?
So I, I simply made the motion because it was on the agenda earlier. So, and I actually would like to entertain the discussion as well, um, simply because here we are as a new board, so.
Never had a better chance, so.
I know, I noticed that it is going to impact our general fund reserves, um, to the tune of over 1.5 million dollars. So I'm just interested in the entertaining discussion and, uh.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on the motion to, uh,
Discuss it.
To discuss it.
Yep.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Commissioner Fiani, do you want to start then?
I, I don't have much to say. I'm all ears and looking forward to, uh, being well informed and well versed.
Okay, Commissioner Drick?
This board has full and sole authority, as we sit here now, sworn in January 3, 2023. Full authority over the budget. Yet, five of the elected people that are now sitting up here were not voters at all on this resolution to drain 1.5, 1.5, 1.6 million out of the budget. I think that voting on the 27th was premature. I think voting should have occurred sometime in January. I think it's unfair to the voters that put the four people on this board that were unable, that weren't sworn in yet to make decisions for next year's budget. I think that, uh, it's just unfair that they don't get a vote on whether this should occur. It's a motion to, uh, postpone again. It's not a motion to destroy it or forever throw it away. It's just that the people that should have been voting on this didn't get a chance to vote. And Commissioner Nakagiri was sick. He was, he couldn't vote either. So that's five people that were elected in November that didn't get to vote on it. I, uh, I find that, uh, unacceptable in a republic democracy.
Mr. Gross?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, several comments. Uh, first, a point of clarification. The one-time bonus payment of 1.6 million is not in the budget. It came up after the budget was, uh, was finalized. If we go ahead and, and make those payments, it will come, the money will come out of our balance fund, which can handle, uh, that amount, uh, withdrawal, if you will. But this is an unfunded, uh, activity, uh, which I have some heartburn on. And when we voted on it in December, I also expressed concern about the timing. And, uh, at this point, I, I'm not willing to say let's postpone, but I do express a concern about the timing. And, uh, as I said, I wanted to clarify what the source of funding would be. So that, that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Can you get somebody? Uh, I, Commissioner Drick's point is that our new commissioners did not have a chance to consider or vote on it. I have no question that, uh, the, the former board had complete authority to do this. And I have as much trust in, uh, that collective, uh, wisdom as I do in the collective wisdom of the people sitting here. In my mind, it's a question, do we want to reverse course? Or do we want to put, uh, a doubt in people's minds as to where we're going? If we, if we reconsider and, uh, at the, the, the 1st of February, we make the same decision, you know, it seems to me that we should have some pretty good reasons to change direction. People that really think that, uh, the wisdom of the last board was wrong. It seems to me that that's the only reason we should, uh, consider a post, post-pollment. And again, I would like to hear from our new commissioners because, uh, this, this was, uh, this movement is for them. It's not for us who were here. So I, I personally would ask the new commissioners to weigh in on this, in a general sense, because again, you don't know all the facts in detail, so.
Can you, Commissioner? Can you, Commissioner, just in in brief, give us some concept of what this resolution is that and what it's going to cost and why are you that's so supporting it?
Oh. I think it's a good idea. You know, Nathan has the has the details.
I recommend our administrator come forward.
Commissioner Bird? Not Commissioner Bird. I didn't get, didn't want to give you a pay cut. I get that once a month.
So just for some some background for the new commissioners and for everybody, really. The budget for two thousand twenty-three included a three percent cost of living adjustment. So that's the amount that was factored in for COLA's cost of living adjustments for next year for our staff. As you all probably know, inflation has been hovering between seven and eight percent over the course of the last year or more. And so three percent doesn't necessarily keep up with the cost of living. And so you look at what the federal government did last week, their average COLA was four point six percent for federal workers. According to the Society for Human Resource Management, the private sector wages are going to increase by about four point six percent in two thousand twenty-three. And yet we had a three percent cost of living adjustment. And so we're in a very competitive market for people. We're trying to make sure that we can continue to retain and attract good people. And yet our COLA is off from what we're seeing in other places. And so the way that this was structured was to not increase the COLA, because frankly, we, the budget would be tight. If we if we did a four or five percent COLA, our budget was getting tight. And so we're comfortable with the three percent cost of living adjustment, but we wanted to utilize other dollars that are available to assist employees through next year. That's that's, and again, this was Commissioner Smith's idea, so I hope I'm not speaking on your behalf. But when we when we sat down and tried to work this out, that was the rationale for it. How do we compensate our employees well through through next year, understanding these challenges still exist? And so as was correctly referenced earlier, it's about one point six million dollars is what it would, what it would cost to do this. For full-time employees, it's two thousand eighty dollars. It's really simple. It's a dollar an hour work per year, regular hours. So a full-time employee works two thousand eighty hours, two thousand eighty bucks. Ottawa County gave five thousand dollars. Don't know how they did it. Don't know why they did it. Saint Clair County had a really complicated tier from twelve fifty up to like four. Not sure why they did it. We were trying to find something really simple. So if you're a part-time or a half-time employee here, it'd be one thousand forty dollars if you work, you know, it's just based on a dollar an hour per work. So it's a simple formula that we think that dollar amount then puts us in a position to be fair, remain competitive and and really take care of our staff through what continues to be at difficult times. The resolution specifies the money would come out of our general fund balance, which is really, really healthy because of really good fiscal decisions made by this board over the year. Our general fund balance grows every year. Right now at around thirty-seven million dollars, we like to retain at least twenty-nine, thirty of that, because we like to have half of our annual general fund budget be available in fund balance. And so we're well above that right now. The ideal uses for fund balance are one-time expenses. Things that do not carry over year after year, things that don't compound. So to take this out of the general fund balance would still leave us in a very healthy position with our finances and with our our reserves, with our fund balance. So that's a little bit of the rationale behind it. And I don't want to necessarily make an argument for for retention or turnover. I want the, I I would prefer that it be focused on helping people through difficult times that work at the county. But I do want the new commissioners to know this. We we are, we were just named a top workplace, right? We have a really good administrator to work with. So we've got all this, we've got all this good stuff going for us, but the number of people applying for jobs here is crapping out big time. Five years ago, we had about seventy applications for every job. We're less than twenty right now. And so we we need to do something. We need to make sure that we're well positioned to continue to attract people here. When we have high-level vacancies, we've been very fortunate that we found the right person. But if that right person didn't exist, there were no other applicants. There were nobody else to consider. And so my concern is that if we don't do something above what the COLA provides, we're going to start to slip a little bit in terms of our attractiveness as an employer and you know, wouldn't want to see that happen. But you know, just to be blunt, this this can be afforded with our fund balance without causing any sort of complications to the budget. It's not a budgetary matter. It's it's think of it as coming out of the savings account, which is appropriate again for as a one-time use. And it's just for two thousand twenty-three. It doesn't reference anything that would go on to future years. It would just be for this year. So appreciate the chance just to give the overview.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, just if I can elaborate just for a moment, and I'd ask Jennifer to correct me if I'm wrong, but when we looked at the average COLA, not even COLA is the right word, but the average pay increase over roughly the last ten years. We had several years where our employees were were great and they stuck with us and they received nothing. They had other years where they received one percent. And I'm talking about the years, obviously, where where we were adamant about holding on to a a fifty percent general fund balance. And it was some pretty tough economic times. And our employees were great. And then, but even after that, yeah, I know they didn't average two point two percent wages in the last ten years. I haven't done the math, but I'm I'm absolutely certain it didn't didn't exceed two point two percent per annum. And now we come into a point where, you know, you can Google, you know, inflation over the last twenty-four months, which is really what I have been preoccupied with for a lot of reasons. But when I equate it to our personnel and how diligent and how hard they work, I really felt it was important to do something. And Jennifer can can probably give you better detail than I can. But you know, this this idea of a one-time dollar an hour, really, they received a COLA last year of, I believe, four percent. Three percent this year, and in a time where their dollar is only buying eighty-one cents of what it used to buy. So this this dollar an hour is a one-time payment. And if our average pay is, I don't know, Jennifer, sixty. Is that right?
It would be less than that. Overall, we let closer to forty-five or fifty.
Okay, all right. So you guys can do the math from there.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, so I think it's also really good for the discussion. And when we first saw the agenda recently, it's difficult to find a lot of information. And as a newly elected, you know, our constituents are bringing us, you know, in. And then here we, you know, we're going to come back to them after day one with a one point five, one point seven, and then some other stipends. So, you know, I personally didn't have enough information on it. It was great that everybody put this forward for discussion. This afternoon, I I got on our website really quickly and to what Administrator Bird was saying about employees. Tried to read the MGT studies as fast as I could to get some of the top reasons why we were losing some of our top people and why people weren't coming here. Salary was in the top six, you know, quality of life. So it was newly elected. It it's good for discussion. So when this comes up, you know, I I heard the the comment from one of the commissioners about, you know, the prior board. I I was blessed to get to meet and talk to a lot of them and and hear their thoughts and and views on items. So there's no doubt on their decision. It was just that we walked in, and I'm not going to speak for all of us, and we're seeing these you know, big hits to our budget. So this discussion is is really good to see where these numbers come from. You know, being in business and owning a business, you just don't throw a stipend out there or a pay raise until you do your background. And, you know, the the VA and the Social Security, I think, is going up eight or nine percent. So, you know, I'm seeing other you know, COLA's increasing. I have not had a chance to look at all the other counties. But that's what, you know, Mr. Bird is is getting paid to do for us, I guess. So I just wanted to make that comment that, you know, coming in here, you know, you have one view, but we're mature enough to know that we have to get more information. And I think that's what we're we're pulling together here before any postponement. I I heard, you know, a postpone of any of these, but it sounds like they're already in motion. So I just want to make a comment on that, because, you know, we are newly elected. We're trying to pull in a lot of information to make decisions for our constituents. And you know, you feel like you're getting your feet to the fire here, but you know, it's good information. So I appreciate the dialogue and information coming in.
Commissioner Nakaguri?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on the discussion here. You know, one of the biggest measures that I look at, you know, in terms of are we fairly compensating our employees is what is our turnover rate? I've said this before publicly. And so I looked at turnover rates, you know, and got them from HR. Over the last four or five years, they've been pretty flat, you know, sixteen percent, fifteen percent. But it's not, you know, it's it's not what I would have expected to see if I if if I concluded that our wage is we're way out of whack with the marketplace, that we are falling way behind. I would have expected to see our our turnover rates increasing. But in fact, on the data I've seen, it's it's been flat over four or five years. So I'm not sure that we, from a market standpoint, that we that we need to do anything further. I know, you know, with our wage study that was just completed this year, if my memory serves me correct, that, you know, we effectively increased our our compensation by five percent when we implemented the the findings on the wage thing. Now, not everybody got five percent. Some people got more, some people got less. But if you looked at, you know, our compensation overall, it was about five percent o- over the course of this year, which is not an insubstantial number and and not a, and and in my view, nothing to sneeze at. The the last thing I want to comment on is this resolution to for the inflation payment, we are paying all employees a dollar an hour, whether they're part of a collective bargaining unit or whether they're non-union. And I just think it's inappropriate for us to be giving away things to employees that are represented by a collective bargaining unit. I mean, things should be bargained for. If if we we shouldn't be, in my opinion, be unilaterally giving this inflation payment, i- it should come as part of a negotiated agreement with, at least for the for the unions. So that's my two cents on the subject. Thank you.
I also wanted to relay a couple of questions I had that perhaps we can discuss right now. I appreciate Commissioner Housman's enthusiasm for getting our getting our opinions as we're trying to absorb as much as we can, as quick as we can. One question I had was as to how come the the judges for the the county were left out of this this stipend? I I just think it would.
This was asked.
I guess I guess there's an, there's an answer.
I can answer that if you think.
Oh, okay.
So judges are actually not county employees. They're they're funding and pay, although routed through the county is from the state of Michigan. So we do not establish compensation for judges.
Oh, even even that that frac, the fractional portion? I thought there was a fractional portion that came through from the county directly.
There may be a a partial payment that, but it is not, they're they're not classified as county employees.
I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I just thought I'd throw my two cents in here and 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 remind everyone that if you believe that this county could never be in financial trouble, you're sadly mistaken. Because it was. When we laid off, why we laid off people, we went from full-time to part-time. We reduced the workforce from seven hundred to five hundred. We quit hiring people. We were in serious trouble. Those of you who were here at that time, in fact, some of the people who were here at the time on union contracts suffered as well. It wasn't, it wasn't a time for for that anybody walked out of here with, except a good job. They always had a place to go to work. And so we were in dire straits, and the only way we could come back was to tighten the reins, to just choke up on it and to spend less. I don't know of any county that ever made money by spending it. But I sure can cite on some of them that lost money by spending it and wasting it. This county has been wise. And its ancestors on this board, from this board, have been very humble about their power to tax the people. In fact, we can't tax anybody anymore than a specified amount for county operations. The townships, the cities and the villages all have that opportunity to increase tax money. We don't. Unless it's with the with the consent of the people. It's got to go before the people for a vote. So I would say the money we're talking about here, my first question was, where does it come from? Comes from those same people that we come from. And they're not making any more money either. And they can't walk up and get raises and bonuses so forth. Not to say that we shouldn't be doing some of these things. But we can't take it so lightly that it's almost a given. And maybe the numbers are too big. I'm sure we deserve, we we have good people and they deserve to be compensated. I'm concerned that that one point six million dollars is a lot of money where I come from. You know, it seems that when you spread it out over a buck a head, doesn't seem like very much. So I I'm not, I'm not supportive of of doing this without some additional information or perhaps some some negotiation. With that, I'll turn it back to the board if there's any other comments. Matt? You want to have that resolution read again, Commissioner?
It was just a resolution for discussion and
All right, so that's the discussion.
Approved and we had our discussion.
All right. So the question now is, is there any move motion that, is there any movement from this discussion? Are we going to take any position from this discussion? Everybody's happy. Well, happy's good. Yes, Commissioner?
If we do nothing and just leave it as a discussion, what is the outcome? That we move forward with one point six million expenditure? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I I would make a, I am going to make a motion that we postpone the implementation of the resolution number ended in the inflation payment resolution that ended in two oh three. So, yeah, um, thank you, Commissioner Gross. So I'm making a motion to postpone the implementation of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash two oh three.
Is there support?
Second.
Drick. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Commissioner Smith?
No, Commissioner Housman.
So far as our employees are concerned, they have it. That's all I'm going to say.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, the idea of perceptions reality. So Mr. Housman's, Commissioner Housman's point is well taken. We've we've had a lot of arguments about about this. And and I'm afraid that we also have to be very careful that we don't undo things that are already in place with some of the negotiations. Which I don't think I'm even at liberty to talk about, because we have to go to closed session. If I remember my rules. So I I would perception is a very big deal. It it, I I certainly understand that it's a lot of money. Per taxpayer household, it comes down to about eighteen seventy-five, eighteen dollars seventy-five cents. Which is not insignificant. Per per county resident. Per per county resident, yeah, it's, you know, whatever, it's eighty eighty cents a head or whatever. And you're right, it is a lot of money. I don't I don't take it lightly at all. But w- we have to start thinking long longer term. We have more than a balanced budget, uh and it's largely due to the credit, not none of any great doing we've done as Board of Commissioners, either uh this past board or or prior boards. It's because of the diligence of the employees we have. They they come forward with proposals, and we challenge them on proposals, and we test them, and we ask them to be extremely cost-conscious. We've had a couple of examples lately where numbers were thrown out to, you know, for certain capital projects, and and I got to tell you, the phone lines were red hot the next morning saying, oh, oh, we got we got to talk about this. This is real money. And uh to their credit, all the division heads have come back and said, yeah, you're right, that's that that's not a number we can live with either and 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 we're, you know, so they take it very seriously when we when we test them on on their proposals and on and on the request for financing. Um so the fact that we're at a roughly uh, I'll call it a uh eight million to be conservative, uh position ahead of our plan on the general fund budget, uh which which I think everybody knows, we always try to keep roughly fifty percent of our operating uh budget in the general fund. Uh it helps us keep our triple A bond rating, et cetera. So uh the fact that we're, you know, conservatively eight million ahead of that is uh is not a testament to the board. It really is a testament to the to the various division heads and and their employees because uh they come up with ideas to save money all the time, and they do a great job. It in comparison to what we're requesting. Gosh, guys, uh this would really appear to be pulling the rug out on them. I I I would just beg you to keep that in.
All of you that are still on Zoom, they're aware that Zoom has crashed on the the board chambers. I think they're working on it currently. Cindy, this is ta- test, test.
Test, test.
We're able to hear you. You're coming in loud and clear.
Madam Clerk, would you please resume the the meeting and give us someplace to start? Do we have a read the last resolution?
Yes, prior to um the short recess, we had a motion by Commissioner Nakagiri to postpone resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash two oh three, and that was second by um Commissioner Drake.
Okay. Yes, sir. Commissioner Drake?
I have a big smile on my face tonight at this point because I started out saying the people that should have voted on this didn't get to in December, but now they're going to get a chance to vote on it. It was a long way that we had to go around the barn, but the new guys tonight get to vote on it. And then remember, there were five that didn't get to vote on it in December. So I'm happy that we now get to vote on it. I, it's okay whichever way it goes. I'm not the, I'm not upset. Whatever the will of the board is, that's terrific, but we're, I think we're doing it the correct way now. So proceeding that the board that's in charge of the twenty-three budget is actually voting on this number for the twenty-three budget.
Commissioner Drake, I I appreciate your perseverance. I always have. Thank you so much. Commissioner Nakagiri, you had a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to share um perspectives with the my colleagues and any any people in the room. The um uh as I've I said earlier tonight, the um uh I'm not, I don't think it's appropriate for the county Board of Commissioners to give uh inflation payment to collective bargaining. It needs to be collectively bargained. And we, the uh the taxpayers need to, you know, be assured that we're 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 bargaining on their behalf and the and the union is bargaining on on their behalf. So when we have this inflation payment that is um I'm gonna say um not bargained for, I I just have a problem with that. I don't I don't agree with that. Um I do want to also share that, you know, if if the um collective bargaining was uh deal, uh that we had to sweeten the pot, that we had to put in inflation payments, uh ma- maybe the exact number that uh is being proposed in this resolution, twenty uh two thousand and eighty bucks for a full-time. Uh and then that's what it costs to get a collective bargaining agreement. I'm very comfortable voting for that because that is a negotiated settlement. So um and then if you build on to that uh one more uh layer, um if if uh through collective bargaining, it's uh it was a buck an hour inflation pay, um I, you know, I am also very comfortable with um saying for non-union folks that I'm gonna uh vote in favor of the same inflation pay that was negotiated with the collective bargaining. I I just see that's an issue of fairness. Um but what I'm not inclined to do is to go out of sequence and um give I'd say a benefit that was, you know, part of a collective bargaining process as a first step in the in this whole um deciding what is the fair amount of compensation. So anyway, I just wanted to share that point of view, and so that people knew where I'm coming from in my rationale. And you may not agree with me, but at least you'll know why I think the way I do, and you can le- leave it at that. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
There any any other discussion here? Do we have a motion on the floor?
We do. A motion by Commissioner Nakagiri to postpone resolution twenty twenty-two dash one two dash two oh three, seconded by Commissioner Drake.
So that is not a, that is not a motion to um to eliminate this. It's a, it's a, it's a motion to postpone it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Gross, you have a comment?
Um I'm wondering if uh the resolution is for a postponement of what would be the effective date that this could take place. It would be seen, you know, March first, June first, September first. I think we need to specify
Well, I'll give you one right now if you'd like it. Well, maybe I won't. Uh we'll have to work on that, but I would think that if we couldn't settle something like this i- in thirty days, now we don't uh, we'll settle it in thirty days, whatever the most convenient board meeting is at that time. If you want to add that to your resolution.
Doesn't it say, doesn't the motion say that uh it puts it in the chair's hands?
No.
This motion didn't say that?
No.
I would I would just ask you to
Would, I'm happy to read it back, uh if you would like, Commissioner Helserman.
I would just suggest that you put the same language as we did on the last one, that it was postponed until the board chair.
There you go.
Put it on the on the
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just want to point out that we we don't have the full uh resolution in front of us, but uh my recollection is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we did uh put in to address your concern, the fact that uh the uh for this to be effective, uh the the contract had to be agreed to at least verbally. If if and I'm gonna actually ask Nathan, is that your recollection as well? I don't have it in front of me.
So the resolution um as it relates to collective bargaining agreements, say that it's only applicable of collective bargaining agreements, which are now open to negotiation, uh are ratified and executed executed by all parties on or before February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. So if we don't have deals in place, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, or agreements in place, then this resolution would not apply to those units. We have four that are open right now.
As the um maker of the motion to postpone, um there is no timeframe. Um therefore, it's um it would be a motion to postpone indefinitely. But I'm, you know, if somebody wants to amend it to put a specific timeframe on it, I'm, you know, they're they're more than welcome to. They're then they have the right to do that, so.
Chair will accept the an amendment to postpone to a given date. Uh and also, I'd like to include um that whatever settlement is reached, it will be effective January first.
I don't think you can do retroactive.
Some 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 of our agreements won't allow us to do that.
Okay. Is that true?
I'm not entirely clear on what the concept is here. I will just say that for um non Act three twelve bargaining unit employees, we are not permitted to do retroactive payment of wages. As I understand it, the way this payment is structured is it is a going-forward basis. I don't want to comment much on what is on the floor, other than, as I understand it, this is simply a motion to postpone without a date, the questions presented in this resolution. And I believe if that is the conclusion of the discussion, or if somebody wants to try to amend, well, the motion, um that would be a separate issue for the table.
Are we clear on the motion, and do we accept the motion as it has just been read? Commissioner Gross?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have I'm willing to vote on the resolution as presented. I just expressed a concern about the timing.
Commissioner Gross, if you could speak into the microphone, it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Motion has been moved and supported? You think this, yes?
Can we roll call this, please? Thank you. Um Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
No.
Commissioner Helserman?
No.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample? You have five noes, four yeses, motion to amend fails. Motion to postpone, excuse me.
Yes, we need a, we need a motion to go into closed session again.
I do. I know it was moved by, it was moved by Commissioner Nak- Niani, who who supported that. I'm sorry. Commissioner um Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, if you can give us just a few minutes to get everyone in on Zoom into the waiting room? Commissioners, the folks are back in from the waiting room?
It's just procedural. It's okay to make a motion to come out of closed session, but it's just a voice vote anyway, so it's very common.
We're back in open session?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, what's the next item on the agenda?
Um it's item number two zero two two, that twenty-three, excuse me, dash oh one dash oh oh four. Do you have a copy of that resolution?
It's a resolution approving the tentative agreement for a three-year agreement between the Livingston County Sheriff's Department, the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, and the Police Officers Labor Union Council representing sergeants. This comes to us from Human Resources.
So moved here for discussion.
Support? Helsman?
Moved and supported for discussion. So we'll discuss it, and then if we didn't, and then that doesn't preclude another res- uh motion to the to move on it. Please disturb, who's to disturb?
I'm voting yes. That's that's my discussion. I'm voting yes.
Is there no res- is there, are you looking for a motion to approve the uh the motion? Because we only have a motion to discuss.
You have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution.
Hearing no uh discussion, I'd ask to call the question and the vote.
All right, so we'll call the question. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Nine to nothing, it wins. Our last call to the public. Anyone in the audience?
You said you wouldn't call.
I can't, I can't help it. I I I would just like to say this, and I mentioned this to the uh previous board. Um I've been around for a minute or two, and it seems that there's a little bit of lack of communication amongst the board members, that things are uh discussed here, maybe for the first time. Um and in as much as I'm all about open meetings and transparency and all that, thousand percent, but I think there's a room for improvement. Um so please don't take this the wrong way. We're I got, we all got thick skin, but um y- you know, it previously, boards had communicated amongst each other prior to coming here um on a particular night. So I would just encourage that to happen, uh first of all. Second of all, when I um I don't often think before I speak, but every once in a while I do. Um but I, when when I do that, I I look to see how people are going to perceive that. Uh but more importantly, how my actions are going to be perceived, and I look to see how somebody would see that negatively or attack it. I would strongly encourage you to watch tonight's meeting from John Q Citizen that has no clue about county government, that sat down tonight with a beer and a pizza and wanted to learn what county government's all about. And take a look at the video, and I think you could all agree to come to the conclusion that there's room for improvement. And please, I'm not chastising. I might sound like I'm scolding or whatever. That's not, the intent is to make us better. That's all I got. Thank you.
Well, before we call for adjournment, is there anything else? Anybody? Well, before we call for a German, is there anything else? Anybody else wants to?
Commissioner Domas, you have two folks on Zoom that have their hands raised. At three, actually. Is that all right if I allow them to speak?
Alright, this.
They have allowed that in the past. They allow comment from Zoom participants.
So is it person in the upper left-hand corner that?
You have three. Okay, thank you, Betsy.
Whoever you are, you have three minutes to speak. I gave you three.
Cindy, can you please announce them for?
Yes.
Chairperson Domas.
So first I'm going to let George at your heart speak.
Oh, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you, gentlemen, for everything you do there. I did have the privilege of attending your swearing-in ceremony and I, I enjoyed that. I do go back to one thing. I think it was Mr. Drake was addressing that Livingston County is in the good shape that it's in because its commissioners. Are very dedicated to what they do. They do their due diligence. They do their homework and they make good decisions on this, on the behalf of the people, and I believe you guys do that. I think there was a lot of talk and discussion tonight about the inflation payment resolution, this stipend. I mean, one thing out of this is clear is I think there needs to be a serious look at the salaries for those employees that are. That are slacking in their, in their compensation packages that, that are not competitive. That being said, I'd like to think that the prior board and half of you guys were there, did their due diligence on this. The gentleman that came up to the counter several times, he had specific numbers on. Cost of living allowances and percentages and everything that went into that thought process. And I think it's disingenuous to try and portray that as a one-point-six-million-dollar pot of gold that's out there when it translates to a dollar an hour, you know, to the employee on the ground. I'm not a county employee. I am retired. I've been a blue-collar worker my whole life and a dollar an hour means a lot, gentlemen. At the end of a forty-hour work week, especially going into this winter, when you're talking about gas and groceries, making decisions, that's gonna affect people's lives. I mean, obviously the unions are out there. You spoke quite a bit about that. They're going to negotiate their contracts. It's gonna come into that. Whatever the outcome is on this. I think that you, I, I hope and pray that you have some faith in the prior board that they, they made this, I'm, decision on good information. I'm sure it all came to them over a period of time. But to delay that or not pay that, it's taking away the, the weekly paycheck from the hard-working people that work for this county. And I just think that would be disingenuous when you have time over the course of this year to look at how you wanna readjust salaries. Take the time to readjust the salaries. Don't take the dollar an hour out of these guys' paycheck right now. I just think it would be wrong. Anyway, I know you'll make the right decisions. I know I have faith in you. God bless you and thank you for the time that you're doing and thank you for allowing me to speak. Appreciate it.
Alyssa.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to everyone on the board for doing all that you did tonight. I did hear Sheriff Murphy comment gruffly to, to the play-out of this meeting. And I would like to counter that with, this was the first meeting with many new commissioners on board. I think you all did a brilliant job today. I was very impressed. Took a, it took a little bit longer, but I'd rather get there the right way. Secondly, regarding prayer being added, I don't know why a committee would have to address that when, why couldn't you just say both? And not spend the time and the money on negotiating this out. Just say both, and that way everybody's happy. To the commissioners that, that mentioned. The constituents and how this impacts them. Every dollar that gets put towards a salary somehow, some way. Comes out of the constituents' pockets. Many of us work for small businesses or are small business owners. We don't have the luxury to have the state hand us one-point-six-million dollars. I believe it was Commissioner Domas, Deaton, and I believe it was Commissioner Drake. That all referenced how this might impact us. The first time I've heard this in a long time come from so many, so thank you for that. Regarding the stipends, I heard, oh, well, the clerk has to take on nine more days of election. I've been in the bean-counting world for a long time and I will tell you, if somebody told me I get nine more days to process my year-end. I can, I can promise you, I would be thrilled with that extension. So I really would like to see when stipends happen, just a more better description as to what is being added to their plate. So that the constituents have a better idea that, oh, it really genuinely is more work being put in front of them. So I think that's all I've got. Thank you so much. God bless each one of you and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Sherry LaRue.
Hi, thanks. It's Sherry LaRue. I'm from Green Oaks Township, and I think I'll end this evening with a prayer. From Pastor Joe Runt, who prayed this prayer twenty-six years ago. At the opening session of Kansas City, or Kansas House of Representatives. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to ask your forgiveness and to seek your direction and guidance. We know your word says, woe to those who call evil good, but that's exactly what we've done. We've lost our spiritual equilibrium and inverted our values. We confess that we have ridiculed the absolute truth of your word and called it moral pluralism. We have worshipped other gods and called it multiculturalism. We've endorsed perversion and called it alternative lifestyle. We have exploited the poor and called it the lottery. We have neglected the needy and called it self-preservation. We have rewarded laziness and called it welfare. We have killed our unborn and called it choice. We have shot abortionists and called it justifiable. We have neglected to discipline our children and called it building esteem. We have abused power and called it political savvy. We have coveted our neighbors' possessions and called it ambition. We polluted the air with profanity and pornography and called it freedom of expression. We have ridiculed the time-honored values of our forefathers and called it enlightenment. Search us, oh God, know our hearts today. Cleanse us from every sin and set us free. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Commissioner Domas, that is all the hands raised in Zoom.
Support.
Support.
All those in favor of German, please signify by raising the right hand or saying aye.
Aye.